The appointed hour of six thirty having been reached, I welcome everyone to this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals. My name is Steve Judge as Chair of the Amherst zoning board of appeals, I call this meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter thirty, a section eighteen and the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order, imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the town of Amherst zoning board of appeals is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen to the proceedings by clicking on a link on the town's webpage. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty eight, and article ten, special permit granting authority of the Amherst zoning bylaw. This public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties of interest. We'll begin with the roll call of the regular members of the ZBA. I'm here, Mr. Judge, I'm here, Mr. Langsdale. Ms. O'Meara. Ms. O'Meara. I think you're muted, but I know you're, I know you're there. Ms. Parks.
Here.
Mr. Maxfield.
Here.
And the associate members, Ms. Waldman. Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Mr. Greeney.
Here.
And Mr. Meadows.
Here.
Also in attendance is Marine Pollock Planner and Dave Washevich, Building Inspector.
And, and Rob Mora.
Oh, Rob Morris here as well, great. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of chapter forty eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. One of the most important elements of the Amherst zoning bylaw is section ten point three eight. Specific findings from this section must be made for all of our decisions. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or additional information. After the board has completed its questions. Excuse me, there we go. I have a peanut before I started. The call. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. This public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raise hand function on their screen. The chair with the assistance of the staff will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, please state your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition is heard by the board is distinct and is evaluated on its own merits and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has ninety days from the close of its hearing to file a decision. For a variance, the board has a hundred days from the date of the filing to file its decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed with the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there is a twenty day appeal prop period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with a relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the registry of deeds to take effect. This hearing can be viewed on the town's web YouTube channel as well. Tonight, we have the following agenda. A public hearing on ZBA twenty twenty one dash zero six backyard ADUs requests a special permit to allow a supplemental detached dwelling unit as accessory to a one family detached dwelling under sections five point zero one, 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 and ten point three eight of the zoning bylaw. Located at thirty four Baker Street, map thirteen D parcel forty six. Neighborhood residents are end zoning district. This is continued from November twelfth, our hearing on December, November twelfth, twenty twenty. Members sitting for this are Steve Judge, Ms. Parks, Mr. Maxfield, Ms. O'Meara, and Mr. Greeney. ZBA FY twenty twenty one dash ten Lawrence Hanson requests a special permit to modify the previously approved special permit ZBA FY twenty or two thousand four dash forty one in order to remove condition nine that requires a permit to expire upon chain of ownership and replace it with a condition that requires a new owner to submit a new management plan and complaint response for the ZBA review and approval at a public meeting. Located at three, three, eight Pine Street, map five B parcel fifty five. Neighborhood residents are end zoning district. Members sitting for this matter are Mr. Judge, Ms. Parks, Mr. Maxfield, Ms. O'Meara, and Mr. Greeney. First order of business is ZBA FY twenty twenty one dash zero six backyard ADUs located at thirty four Baker Street. We have received a request from the applicant to continue the hearing on this matter until February. I'm unaware that the applicant wishes to speak to the board on this.
Correct, I spoke to the, um, the applicant and he submitted an email requesting the continuance to a date and time certain in February. And I said that I could, in addition, convey that to the board. So, and I said that his attendance was optional for tonight.
Um, are there any questions or comments from the board on the request to continue this matter? Are there any public comments regarding this matter? And I want to remind the public that any comments on this matter shall be limited to whether this application will be continued until, until February and not on the application itself. No indication of public comment. Hearing no further comments, I move, we continue this matter until February eleventh. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Park seconds, is there any discussion on the motion to continue this till February eleventh? If not, a vote occurs on the motion. It's a roll call vote, I vote I, Ms. O'Meara.
I.
Ms. Parks.
I.
Mr. Maxfield.
Hi.
Mr. Greeney.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously, so we'll deal with this matter on our February eleventh meeting. The next matter on the agenda is ZBA FY twenty twenty one. Lawrence has Hanson requesting a special permit to modify a previously approved special permit. ZBA FY two thousand four dash forty one in order to remove a condition number nine that requires the permit to expire upon chain of ownership and replace it with the condition that requires a new owner to submit a new management plan and a complaint response form for the ZBA review and approval at a public meeting. It's located at three, three, eight Pine Street, map five B parcel fifty five. Neighborhood residents are end zoning district. We've received the following submissions, a modified management plan and a copy of special permit ZBA FY two thousand four dash zero 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 four one. Are there any disclosures from board members regarding this matter? Does the applicant wish to speak before the board?
Larry, I promoted you to a panelist, so you're able to unmute yourself.
Hi, everybody, thanks for, uh, hearing me out and, um, no, no additional comments, we submitted all paperwork.
Mr. Hanson, just, just give your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Lawrence Hanson, thirty six Jeremy Drive, Westfield, Miss. And, yeah, we submitted all the paperwork. I just wanted to attend just to see if you guys had any additional questions and. That was what it.
For the benefit of the board, the issue before us tonight is the desire to remove condition nine of the original special permit which required upon change of ownership, the special permit would expire. And instead, what's before us is that a new with upon change of ownership, a new, a management plan and a complaint response form should be submitted to the ZBA for review and for approval at a public meeting. That's what you're requesting, correct? By way of background, there were a lot of, for the benefit of the board, there were a lot of special permits granted fifteen and twenty years ago that had this provision. Often the ZBA has, when there is a change of ownership, has moved to amend the special permit to require that management and complaint response forms and plans be submitted to the ZBA and not have the special permit expire. It's been something we've done quite a bit in the past, and that's by way of background to the members of the board. Does anybody have any, any questions for the, the applicant? Hearing none, are there any public comments? Regarding this. No public comments. Then I move that we modify special permit ZBA FY two thousand dash zero 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 four one by amending condition nine to require that on change of ownership, the new owner submit a new management plan and a complaint response form for the ZBA review and approval of public hearing and that we approve the management plan and the complaint response form submitted in to the body previously, and that was in on our record today. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Maxfield seconds the motion, is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Mora.
Oops. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify, you said public hearing, I think you meant public meeting.
Thank you, I did mean public meeting, yes, thank you for the clarification.
Uh, Mr. Chair, do we just?
Yes. I'm, I asked, yeah, we should amend the motion, so we amend the motion to delete, I move we amend the motion to delete hearing and insert public, insert meeting. Second.
Second.
We're gonna need a roll call vote on that. I vote I. Ms. O'Meara.
I.
Ms. Parks.
I.
Mr. Maxfield.
Hi.
Mr. Greeney.
Hi.
Now with discussion is on the underlying motion. Any discussion on the underlying motion? If not, the vote occurs on the underlying motion as amended.
Let's see.
Roll call vote, yes, Mr. Greeney.
Um, I, I do have a question.
Okay.
So, um, I don't know if anyone on the board knows or anyone present might know, but hasn't there been some change in? Owner occupancy requirements on duplexes since two thousand four, is there any relevant change in bylaws that has occurred between two thousand four and now that would be relevant to our making this decision? Is anyone aware of it?
I do not know the answer to that. I don't think there's anything relevant, but I'll ask staff to opine on that if they know the answer.
Um, I, I suppose I should, I should have been more ahead on this and looked into it. It seems to me there's been, there might have been something where requirements of owner occupancy on duplexes. Some change in bylaw to that extent, I mean, to that effect. Anyway, I just, I, I, I'm asking and no one knows.
Uh, Mr. Mora.
So, since two thousand four, there's been a couple of changes related to duplexes. One is that the bylaw established a different use classification for owner occupied and non-owner occupied duplexes. The other change that occurred in recent years is that in a non-owner occupied duplex, the permit actually does expire, but only in the RG district. This is in the RN district. Uh, so if this one was being permitted today, the, the current thinking of the board in recent years is not to expire permits on the change of ownership and rather put the condition that you've, is part of your motion now.
Do I give you the answer, Mr. Greeney?
To some extent, uh, anyway, no.
Any further comments or questions? There being none, this is a roll call vote on the motion to amend condition nine and to condition, accept the management and the complaint response form. I vote I. Ms. O'Meara.
I.
Ms. Parks.
I.
Mr. Maxfield.
Hi.
Mr. Greeney.
Hi.
Motion is unanimous, motion carries.
Thanks, Larry. So, Larry will provide you a special permit after the board reviews the decision and signs it and is filed with the town clerk. Will provide you a copy, so then you can record it with the registry of deeds.
Okay.
The cover letter will, will go into detail of, of all the steps that are needed.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you. Since there is no other matters before the public hearing, I move we close a public hearing and open a public meeting to deal with administrative matters and for the board discussion. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion, it's a roll call vote. I vote I. Ms. O'Meara.
I.
Ms. Parks.
Hi.
Mr. Maxfield.
Hi.
Mr. Greeney.
Hi.
All right, um, we're now in a public meeting to, uh, the, the agenda for which is to discuss some administrative matters for the board. I thought this was really a good thing to do, just to kind of follow up with board members on, you know, some things that we, I think we should be thinking about and give you an opportunity to ask questions or to make suggestions. Is, I don't, I really, on balance, I think this board has functioned really well and I think the members have spent a lot of time, given a lot of effort. It's really been difficult over the last nine months to conduct these meetings and to participate in these meetings via Zoom. It's just very odd and weird and we're all getting used to it, but I think that the board as a whole has done just a tremendous job and I thank each one of you and compliment each one of you for the work you've done, as well as the support we've gotten from our staff, which is, we just frankly couldn't do it without them. So, there's nothing that, there's nothing earth shaking here that I, I think we need to talk about. But I do think it's important, just as a reminder, to go through a few things for how we operate as a board and also give you the chance to ask some questions and, and also finally give you some information that we've had and provide some opportunities for you to have input into the potential modification of the zoning bylaws in the future of the, of the town. So, the first item I'd like to go over is just a little bit about site visits. And site visits are something that we do, you know, that you've all participated in. And it's really important that the site visit be limited to just getting a feel for the, where the building on the ground where it sits, how it sits with the neighbors, the proposed space, the lot lines. If it's, we're looking at internal stuff inside, interior stuff, how it all, it's how the physical, how it's physically set up. It really is not the opportunity for us to engage in a discussion with the applicant about the the value of it, why they're doing it, what the reason is, what the neighbors are thinking about it, how they've thought, how they've gone through their whole thought process. That's more appropriately dealt with at the public meeting. And indeed, each, each question we ask, we should be also at the public meeting, asking that question and, and then putting it out for the record. So, I think it's really important that these site visits be focused just on, you know, the, just the facts, man. Kind of from, um, I don't know if any, Keith is probably the only one on this call, Keith and I are the only ones on the call that remember Dragnet, but it is kind of just, just the facts, ma'am approach to, to the, to a, a site visit. And then those questions that we all have and we all do this, I'm, I'm as guilty as anybody on this. We all do this, but those questions really should be way, uh, held off until we have the public hearing. So, the fight, the, the notion is to kind of get in, get out, get the facts, get a sense of the feel of, of the, the site and then move on. And I also think it's important that the chairman or whatever, the, the acting chair in that case, open up and give that sort of context to the applicant. And then we really want to rely a lot, to a large extent on staff to make sure we're moving along and that we're not engaged in too much discussion. So, I'd just like to encourage everybody to keep the site visits on focus, on topic and not kind of veer off into a lot of other, a lot of other things, other than just seeing the site, seeing how the, the building or the, or the facility fits in with the, the area. And so you can have a better sense of how to make a decision on this from being physically there. Are there any comments or questions, Maureen?
I just wanted to, uh, if Keith wants to indicate that he's here for the record.
Here.
And Joan, we didn't get your, um, you as well, Ms. O'Meara, we need you just to, to say that you're here.
Here.
Present, yep. And another thing that I wanted to then discuss is, is board decorum. And again, this is made more difficult and, or it's, it's weirder in on Zoom, we lose that body language, we lose all sorts of, we're sort of these disconnected bodies that are on these little squares and it makes it more difficult. And I think we've conducted these meetings pretty well, um, and I think everybody is, is behaved really excellently. But I think it's a time just to remind us all a couple of things. I had this, at one of these meetings that I know you've been going to Dylan, Mr. Maxfield, from the, that sponsored to kind of help us become better board members, I received a, um, an article that really kind of goes through how to be a really good board member and some of the things you should keep in mind. And I'm going to give that to Maureen and ask her to distribute it, but there's a couple of, of the twenty five different short things that this article identifies, there's a couple I would like to highlight. And the first one is that we are really, we really do want to create a good impression of the board for the public. And we have to remember that for a lot of people, this will be their most important. In some cases, their first real dealing with, with the town, with the town government. And if it's dealing with their home or their business or their, their property, this is really important to them and they may not be very, um, they may be very nervous, they may be very uncertain about this and it's really important that we give, that we give the impression that this is a, this, that the town works, that, that we care about this, that we pretty, we're treating this fairly and that we're taking it seriously. And I think we've done that, but it's also really important just to remember that that's overall, that's one of the most important things we, we should be doing. I also would like to encourage everybody to be on time and to be a couple of minutes early. I think ten minutes early gives us the opportunity just to say hello to each other to, to kind of, to coalesce as a group ahead of time and we're not just kind of starting off cold. It was, it's normal in, we're not going to talk about the issues and we're not going to talk about matters before us, we're not going to deliberate, we're not going to violate the open meeting law. But it's important to be, I think it's important to give us some time, just so that we as a board are more familiar with each other than just at the meetings, so ten, ten minutes ahead of time. That means we can get started on time and we're going to talk about how we schedule things here in a second. But I'd like to encourage people to come in ten minutes early if they can, it just gives us a chance to start on time all, as often as possible. One other thing that I, that I feel is important is I want to make sure we enforce with applicants the rule to get us the material ahead of time so that you can have enough time to review it. Most of you work full-time jobs, I don't, I'm lucky, I'm, I'm no longer working, but many of you do and it's, we get a lot of material and it's really difficult if you don't get it ahead of time. So, one of the things that we are going to continue to do is require that applicants get get material to us seven days ahead of time and that there aren't any material changes or of any significance before that, so that we can have the material to study. Because if you're, you work in a full-time job, it's really, you have to really make time for this and I'm aware of that. And I think, well, that the applicant is represented by an attorney or just a, a person representing themselves, there's no reason that we can't expect them to put the information to us in seven days ahead of time, so we have adequate, adequate time to review it. Mr. Langsdale.
Yeah, just a question on that, uh, if for some reason we don't get something for, for like a day or two ahead and it's significant, it is a significant amount of material. Uh, what recourse do we take?
Well, I think we continue the hearing, if it's, I, I mean, that's the, that's the ultimate recourse we can have is that we just, we don't have time to, we can either listen to the hearing and say, we, we, and listen to the applications presentation and say, we don't have enough time to review this, we have, uh, we have to continue this to a later point or we can tell them ahead of time, we didn't get it in, in advance. We intend to continue this. You, and you may or may not want to show up at this meeting, but we are going to continue this because this is voluminous material. It's, it's significant and the board hasn't had time to review it and it violates the board's rules. So, I think those are the two options we have.
Yeah.
Yet we have to be willing to do that, right?
Right.
Yep, Maureen.
I just want to say, you know, sometimes an applicant, um, for these larger projects, uh, will have some things that are submitted in a timely manner, but then things happen and they, it is, you know, just a few days before the meeting, so and another option is, is to say, oh, well, you know, the board can review the things that you, you provided, uh, in, in an advanced notice at least seven days. And then, you know, if the board decides to can hold that meeting, you could review those items and then say, oh, well, we only had twenty four hours, uh, you know, to have this new material or whatever the, the amount of time and say, we'll take that up at the next meeting. So, you could do some review, um, of, of the project. Just missing it all, so it is all project specific of, of what the details are, but.
Good. Um, and the last thing I wanted to talk about is, and I'm, this is one where I'm talking, I'm myself to blame for this. But I really think it's important that we avoid being engaged in an adverse, in a, it's kind of an adversarial relationship or discussion with applicants, the public, the representatives. We really are, we're more a semi judicial body than we are like a legislative body and I have a, I've seen too many congressional hearings and not enough sort of judicial hearings that I kind of fall into the trap of back and forth with, um, with a, an applicant at times, I, I, I remember one case where I've done that and I regret that and I think it's really important that we give everybody the opportunity to speak. Uh, we don't take it personally and we don't take, you know, sort of defend the, the, the nature of the body or, or the, the ZBA. But I think that it's important that we let people speak and even if they are, they want to tell us off, we, we accept it, we hear it, we don't respond to it and we don't have to respond to it. That we're more, we ought to think of ourselves as more semi judicial bodies. That we're more, we ought to think of ourselves as more semi judicial body rather than a legislative body. Where you have a kind of a back and forth in terms of tone, not in terms of information, but in terms of tone. And so I think that's something I, I found myself doing recently. I don't wish to do it anymore. And I think we all should abide by that admonition if we could. But those are the, I will, but you're going to receive this, it's called Riggins Rules. I think it's pretty good. It provides some, some context for this. But those, those are things that I think I'd like to have us work upon over the next year as we continue in the this body. And I hope that you'll get a chance to see this. Maureen will, will share it with you. But I'd certainly open, if you, other people have questions about either decorum, deportments, the way the, the meeting is handled or conducted. This is a good time to bring that up. Okay. Oh, Mr. Maxfield, yep.
I, I missed literally the last part you were saying as, as I was Googling Riggins Rules. We're bringing related to, to decorum here right now.
Yep, yep.
Um, I guess, I don't know, the, the last thing, there's something I've been thinking about, which probably isn't as necessary if we were all meeting in person, but maybe we want to might consider this a little bit more while we're still meeting on Zoom regularly. Maybe everybody kind of seeking recognition from the chair as, as we kind of move. Because I know done with applicants where maybe I want to ask an applicant a question where I'll find usually while I'm still kind of getting there, you know, they might, they might chime in with something and start replying where I, I don't know, sometimes I feel it would be a little bit better if after I've asked that they still seek recognition from the chair to respond to the question where something we're all meeting in person and we have it, it, it might not be necessary. But it feels a little bit, you know, when you're on, you're on the walkie talkie, you have to say over when you're finished. So people know your, your finger's off the button, you know, while we're over Zoom, it might make, if anybody else is feeling this way, that maybe everybody seeks. Mr. Chair, may I be able to respond to this? Just so that way we don't kind of have people talking over each other on Zoom, which I feel happens a little bit in this format. So I don't know, while we're doing this remote format that, that for, for all cases to speak, that everyone seeks recognition from the chair simply to, to kind of keep things moving without people talking over each other. What, what's everybody's thoughts on that?
Well, I'll just respond quickly. We should always do that. I mean, the, the question, the real need is to seek recognition of the chair all the time. And you all can help with that by doing it, by helping out. And I, and it's important for me to try to enforce that in as a, in as delicate and diplomatic, or not delicate, but as diplomatic a way as possible, that that you seek recognition from the chair before you speak. And with the public, that's the chair's responsibility to make sure that they seek recognition before they, or applicants seek recognition before they speak. So I, I appreciate that comment, Mr. Maxfield. I think you're right. And that all of us can, all of us can do better with that. And the chair has to be the one to impose that discipline. And I will. Any other comments or questions or suggestions for sort of decorum and deportment of the board? Any concerns that you guys have? Good. One of the things that we have historically done is had this meeting start at six and end at nine. We try to, to have it end at nine. Three hours is a long time. It's, it runs over at times, but the notion is if we can't, if we know we can't finish it in a few minutes after nine o'clock, we're going to continue it. We're going to try to keep that as much as possible. After nine, I think it's just, it just becomes a really long day. And I don't feel that, especially if you're working and you got to be at work at eight or nine o'clock the next morning. We've pretty much shot your evening. But this year we moved it back to 6:30 for a couple of good reasons. Number one, we had people whose work schedule changed because of the COVID and we wanted to accommodate them. And two, we have one member who's also on another board that tends to meet on the same day. And I'm wondering if, if we, I, I'd like to know about the board's consensus. If we can move back to six o'clock as much as possible, as often as possible and have a full three hours. I think it's hard to go to nine thirty or 10 o'clock at night. I really prefer not to. I hate to lose the other 30 minutes if we start at 6:30 all the time. So my question is for, I guess, Mr. Maxfield and Ms. Omira. Is it going to be possible for you with your schedule to have the meeting at six? And is it possible for you, Mr. Maxfield, to work with your other committee to either meet on another day or perhaps end earlier? I know you get off of work at five and then you have to go to one meeting and then you come to the other. So I'm sensitive to that. But I don't know if there's a way that you can work with your other committee to try to provide that flexibility. And, and Ms. Omira, whether your schedule still allows you to, to work, to come to six o'clock meetings. So Mr. Maxfield first and then Ms. Omira.
Yeah. So what I've been trying to do with my other meeting is because we typically meet bi-monthly. So I tried to now stagger it where one week is the Board of License and Commissioners. And the next week will be the zoning Board of Appeals. I know with the holidays, I know, I don't think there's any overlap. I have to double check my schedule on that. But I know going forward from January, this is a discussion I'm going to be having with them as well. Saying Thursday nights are fine, but it has to be, they can't coincide with each other. So that way it would be, I could do ZBA at six and then Board of Licenses at five on the night set that isn't. But I will coordinate once we get our next schedule going forward from January, coordinating to make sure that there is no overlap with ZBA. And then anywhere where there might be an overlap, say I can come to that meeting, but that's going to be a half hour in and out. We're just approving licenses and moving on. We can have our discussions another night. So going back to six shouldn't be an issue for me. Just so long as we know in advance which, which nights that we're meeting, which it looks like we have our, our schedule set. Thinking to what, January, February, we've got meetings already set. So we, we know when we're meeting. So I don't think it would be an issue for me to move back to six, 6:00 PM.
Okay. Ms. Omira, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, six, six PM works for me. Thank you.
Great, great. Good enough. So I think we can probably work that through. Let's try to have six o'clock meetings. And is there anybody else that has an opinion on this or, or a conflict? Mr. Langsdale?
I don't have a conflict and I, I think six o'clock is, is best. The only thing that concerns me is sometimes we'll have two or three hearings and one will take long. And then we're, the last one may be I don't know, a very simple kind of thing, just a, a family trying to do something with their property. And we, we, we get to nine o'clock and we're not done with them because the other things have run long. That if we, I, I'm just concerned that we allow them more time in that evening to go to nine thirty or so, just so we don't have to continue something that may end up going three or four weeks further down the road. That's really not that convoluted, that it's really kind of simple, that, that, that we can have the flexibility. That's what I'm getting to. Thank you. The flexibility to deal with that without going, you know, nine o'clock, we're out of here.
Yeah, I think that's.
That's, and that hopefully won't be, you know, often at all. But just so that maybe that in terms of scheduling, we maybe think about that in terms of each night. What might take longer so that if there's something that will take longer, that we can then say, okay, it's nine o'clock, we're not going to continue it. But we're not then hurting the, the smaller application. I'll say it that way.
Yeah, I think that's something we should be sensitive to. There's one way to do it is to put some of the quick, that we think are quick early on the agenda. If that's, and we get that done early in the meeting at six right away. It all depends. Some of these meetings are we have to go back and forth. We'd have to, we have both hearings and meetings. So, but I think the most important thing is to have some flexibility to try to deal with the simple things if we can. And have some flexibility in time. I think it's a good suggestion. Good. All right. Any other comments? Those are both good. Any questions?
I have a quick question.
Yes, Ms. Parks.
Is it ever possible to change the order of how things are heard? I guess from what Keith was saying, you know, if you know something's going to take, you know, there's something really simple that is not going to take very much time. I mean, I know there's no guarantee on that. But are you allowed to do that or is that something you're not allowed to do?
I, well, the agenda can be, I'm going to ask Maureen on, to opine on this as well. But the agenda can be set ahead of, should be set ahead of time. And what I, I worry that once the agenda is set and public notices out, we have to follow the agenda unless we make a motion, some kind of a motion to move them. But, you know, Maureen, Rob, Dave, can you talk to us about a flexibility we have on the, on the agenda? Yes, Mr. Moro.
When we're not setting times, which we usually do not, so we don't have a hearing at six, six thirty, seven. I think there's some flexibility and it's not uncommon for the chair to recognize that, you know, something could be disposed of quickly. And, and might choose to do that and move it up in the schedule. So I think the chair has that option, even at, at the opening of the hearing. But I have one other suggestion. This is something the board used to do quite often. Maybe Keith remembers it if he was around during this time is that when the, when the chair sees that, you know, maybe they've had a really long one or two hearings, eight fifteen, eight twenty. And is not through that, that hearing and still has another one to open up. The board might decide to close the public hearing and kind of put that one aside until later. And not complete their deliberation and their finding or their conditions and vote on it and go through the 10.3 findings. And open that public hearing for that, you know, that last group that's waiting to be heard. And if the board has time, come back to it, to that public meeting portion of that earlier case, finish it out. Or continue it if it's too late. And it's a way to get everybody heard, all the, all the presentation done. And all the applicants, you know, reasonable time to be given to, to, to make their case. And have the board react and kind of give them an indication of how things are looking in that, in that first initial setting.
It's good to know we have that flexibility.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep. Good question, Ms. Parks. Anything else? All right. The next item on the agenda is discussions about recommendations to the planning board regarding modification of a zoning bylaws. As I think most of you know, the planning board is been, been tasked with reviewing the zoning bylaws and making, I think, recommendations to the town council. And this is a process that's going to take a little bit of, a little bit of time. It's not going to be done quickly. But it is an opportunity for us with the experience we have with the zoning, with the zoning bylaw to provide input to the planning board on changes that we think are important. And we'd like, things that we'd like to see. And so what I wanted to do is first, either Rob or Maureen or Dave, let us know about, tell us, can you kind of set the schedule? And then secondly, just really tell you, tell you that this is something that over the next couple of months, I think we'll be able to look at. And if we have, have suggestions for the planning board, that we should put them either as a letter, as a, as a motion. Or just empower the chairman to go and, and talk to the zoning board chairman and discuss these changes. But some way communicate them at some point in the future. But really, over the next couple of months, take a look at the, take a look at the zoning bylaws. And, and through your, your, your history with them, your work with the committee. Make any suggestions that you think we can just consider as a board, we can consider suggestions and make those suggestions to the planning board. But Rob, could you talk about the, the process that's being used to review and then potentially modify the zoning bylaws?
So I just let, let you know a little bit of what's, what's going on right now. We are at the very beginning of really looking at the bylaw page by page. The, the tasks are broken up, that staff is doing some of that work. And the CRC is doing some of that work and the planning board is doing work as well as they always do. The, the bigger discussions of bylaw changes are beginning to occur at the CRC, the Community Resources Committee. That's the, the committee to the town council. In their, in their latest meeting, the town council meeting. The CRC brought to them a recommendation on priorities to address in the zoning bylaw. And like I said, they're really focused on some of the bigger items, the downtown zoning, inclusionary zoning, affordable housing. And there's a really long list of things that are being worked on. And staff will be working on more of those technical fixes, corrections, missing definitions. Incorrect references in the bylaw and reformatting. So we're trying to give it a, a cleaner, fresh look, easier to read, easier to follow, straighten out some of the tables. Take all this criteria out of the table format and put it into more of the narrative format. And, and make the table a little cleaner and easier to read. So at the very beginning of this, so it's a great time for the zoning board to, you know, either individual members or administrative meetings to work on any suggestions they have, get them to staff. It may not necessarily be the, the old process that we knew when we were, you know, a town meeting. A form of government where the zoning subcommittee and zoning board would talk about all these changes. Staff will be bringing them to the CRC. We'll be drafting proposals and presenting them there first. And then ultimately going to planning board, public hearings and town council, public hearings for adoption. So I think you're going to start to see this happen more aggressively as we go into the new year. There's, I think a lot of, there's a lot of momentum. There's a lot of kind of built up interest in, in, in making the bylaw better. So I think it's a good time to get involved and just let us know through Maureen or, you know, anybody. You know, what you're thinking and what we can do to help and get that, that information. Certainly join those meetings, you know, they're going to. Their CRC meetings are held generally early afternoon, twice a month. And then of course, the, the discussions will ultimately happen at evening meetings with the planning board and zoning board, town council as we go into the new year.
Great. Thanks, Rob. Let's move on to the next item then. Ms. Pollak, do you want to talk about standard conditions and the resident managers? Those are two next items.
Oh, sure. So just to start with the standard conditions for residential uses. You know, the board has had conditions relative to the, you know, rental housing regarding the amount of people that can be on the premises at one time. For instance, at a party or something like that. And then the other standard condition that has been historically used by the board is about how many guests can stay overnight and for how many consecutive nights in a row. And I don't know if Rob wants to talk about how, you know, the intention of those conditions relative to, you know, this, you know, college town and, and protecting, you know, the neighborhood and the property owner and the tenants themselves with these conditions.
Mr. Moro.
Sure. These conditions have, you know, they've changed over the years. When I had first come to work in Amherst, the standard condition would be something like no more than four occupants in, in a dwelling unit. And it, it sounds good and, and, you know, helps supports a decision. But, you know, when we're in a enforcement position and there's a property that's having some trouble and the neighborhood remembers those hearings and, and calls attention to those conditions. We find that, you know, the reality is that's really difficult to enforce. You know, the boyfriend, the girlfriend staying over, you know, the number of cars that are in the driveway, more than. the number of cars that are in the driveway, more than four the, the indicators there. And it really was difficult, I think, for us to either make any enforcement and satisfy the, the legitimate concerns that the neighbors had. So we, we suggested years ago that if we're going to put a limit on the number of occupants that we talk about guests. And just, you know, be clear upfront that, yeah, there's, there's full-time, regular conditions where there's four unrelated individuals living there. But there's also other situations that occur that have a guest staying or an extra vehicle parked there that isn't always there. And that led us to trying to establish, well, what is the duration and, you know, consecutive days or overall duration that makes sense? And that's changed a little over time and really, you know, based on the situation, the, the neighborhood, the, the history of the property. You know, the board has, you know, dealt with that differently, but you know, typically it's, you know, some small number of days up to seven maybe. So that, you know, that's something that has, has helped us when we're dealing with, with issues, at least it gives us and the property owner a, a clearer standard to, to try to comply with. The other one about larger gatherings. You know, we see less of this as a problem than, than we did in, in prior years. There are a lot of good things going on with party registration through the police and campus monitoring that our, our code enforcement and, and community outreach officer, Bill Laramie, will, you know, hold meetings with neighborhoods, with new tenant groups that move into properties that historically have had larger gatherings. So, you know, it's, it's pretty typical that we see in leases without even, you know, the board's involvement in a property. There'd be a limit on, on the number of guests that can be there at a gathering at one time. Sometimes the, with permission of the owner, that could be exceeded. So I think that's pretty standard and has worked well. I think, you know, certainly the, the ones that the board have issued permits for. You know, we typically see ten guests per, you know, per dwelling unit as a number. We have seen higher numbers. But I think there's enough other tools in place for us to adequately respond to that situation if needed. And it really is all about kind of for, on, on our standpoint, it's really about gauging the response that we get from the property owner to the situation. It isn't so much that the party or gathering occurred or, you know, the guests stayed over for five nights. It really is about what is, you know, what is the property owner doing to maybe more hands-on or more adequately manage the property if it needs to be managed in a, in a more controlling way. And that's really what we look to try to get out of the property owners or managers.
Many, many times this is in response to concerns from neighbors who, right? A lot of times this is a condition that's been, in response to neighbors. Having worried about large parties or having instead of four people living there, really eight people are living there and you really want to control that because it's both the neighbors and the town has a desire not to have overcrowded rental housing, especially in a college town. Is that, is that the motive, that the, the reason these kind of conditions began, Rob?
I, I think it is part of it. You know, certainly whenever a neighborhood or, or public is involved with a, a case, it, it almost puts the board in a position to have to address this in order to adequately support their findings. And to make their determination that it is not more detrimental to the neighborhood to add this additional dwelling unit or expand it or whatever the, the request may be. So it becomes a good tool for that. And it, and it is there to, to reinforce the bylaw requirement, which is, you know, no more than four unrelated. And, you know, the, the group of conditions that go along with that, whether it's related to parking or gatherings or guests, all are, are there to support that, you know, that bylaw being complied with. And, you know, this is really, you know, much more important before the rental regulations were adopted, because it's all we had. Now, you know, the rental regulations have been really successful in doing what it was set out to do. And really, you know, bring attention to a property, make known who the owner and manager is. Highlight deficiencies and violations right on the, the, the mapping system on the public, you know, website. So that's available contact information. So I think all of that, the, the vast majority of the properties, you know, are very well managed by owners or develop, you know, investors, owners or property managers that really do take it seriously. And the problems we have are with a really small number of properties. So I think, I think that's been really helpful. We are complaint response. So it really, you know, we're not out there patrolling the town, looking for problems, trying to correct them. We're responding to the complaint. And that's the, the way the program and our, our department was designed and structured.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes, yes.
Is there, is there an easy place to find the information to, to contact the town about problem properties? Because I, I, you know, in the past I had had a problem with a rental property with too many cars parked and having our driveway blocked. And the only thing I knew to do was, you know, it happened to be run by Eagle Crest. And so, you know, I had their number on speed dial and was constantly calling them. But I didn't know that there, that I could have gone to the town and said, you know, this, these are, these guys are in violation. Is, is that like published somewhere so that, you know, citizens know that?
Yes, it is. So on, on the website, through the rental, residential rental permitting pages, there's a couple of options. You can get right to email contacts for me, John Thompson, the code enforcement officer, any other inspector in the department. But there's also an online complaint system. So you can file your complaint online, you can upload pictures, you can make it anonymous. You can ask for a response and, and the person making the complaint will get one. Those can be filed twenty-four, seven. And it goes directly to a, a small group of, of staff that will respond to those and divide them up to the, you know, the proper staff person. Submit a complaint right there. Yep, Maureen was, is right at that place. So that's, that's the way most of our complaints are received now. You know, we'll get them over the weekend. They'll come in the middle of the night. In fact, we'll get complaints about anything, you know, the sidewalk not being shoveled, the, the trees not being trimmed back in certain areas. And, you know, we'll kind of manage that and, and send it off to proper department that might be handling that case, but it, it is a pretty well-used way of filing complaints. Of course, you know, you can call or email directly is another way of doing it. And, you know, occasionally we'll get a written request about a, to deal with something with a property.
Mr. Langsdale?
A couple of things. One, this complaint response that we were just looking at. Would it be possible for us to include that in the complaint response that is given to the abutters with phone numbers of the owner and management? So that people understand that there is more than one avenue to travel to make a complaint. Rather than just saying it's on the website, if we could give them concrete instructions on how to make those complaints. That's one. Mr. Mora? One of the things that I know that, that we have dealt with in the past is in, with parking. And not just, not just for parties, but for like if suddenly there are eight people living in a place that are only supposed to be four, suddenly there's like two or three cars parking on lawn. It, that is something that we've always, as I remember it, I think made a condition about, but is there something more we can do about that in terms of? My, my understanding is that that's, that that, that doing that is against the bylaws and therefore is something that can be dealt with through your, your office. Is there something we can do to strengthen that in terms of, one, the bylaw? And two, in terms of, of conditions?
So I definitely, you know, favor conditions, even if they repeat what the bylaw does. You know, especially if we're in a, in a situation where there's known to be a problem or a neighborhood that's really concerned about it. I think getting it as a condition of a special permit just draws additional attention to it. It's a document that's recorded against the property. I think that's a, a, you know, a wise decision. Once the, once the violation is identified, we're notified and respond to it and, you know, can, can find evidence of the violation. The rest is pretty much handled by, you know, the, the laws that we have, you know, they, they're, they're given a period of time to comply with it. They're subject to the penalties that the, the, the non-criminal disposition allows. And, you know, we'll use those and if we need to. Ninety-nine percent of the time, the issue's dealt with just on a simple request. Even there's, there's really good response and good communication to our office. What gets tricky is when you have those eight cars at a property that we're trying to understand is, you know, how regular of a condition is that? And does it, is it an indicator of some other problem? And that takes time. You know, the code enforcement officer will monitor the property for a period of time before taking any action because we know ultimately if we have to go into court, which is our, our next place to go to get any sort of support and enforcement, we need to have a good case established. So we need to be pretty certain that we have a violation there. So we've got the tools. We have, you know, staff typically available pretty rapidly for complaints that are made. And then, you know, depending on what the situation is, there are longer term monitoring needed in order to establish that violation, which honestly, most times do not result in finding any violation because it's just really difficult to.
Okay.
I'll just add the, the, the parking on the, parking on the lawn is not permitted. It must be unpaved surfaces. So that's one that we typically find in residential districts. And only two cars are permitted in the front setback of those properties. Those are the two major parking-related violations that we would find in a residential district.
Thank you. I guess one, one question I have, and I don't know the answer to this, is is, is there an annual notification from a renter, from a rental unit to its neighbors that here's the, here's my number, here's the complaint response form. Is there some way that the neighbors get an, an annual notice or is it done just, just through the special permit process? And after that, the, the neighbors have to go to the, to the town website to try to lodge a complaint.
The, the only notice would be by the renewal of the rental permit, which you'd have to go into our website to view that to get the information of the emergency contact and their phone number. So other than that, unless we were to make that a condition of a special permit, there wouldn't be any other requirement to notice annually to the neighbors.
Okay. Good. Other topics to discuss, Maureen, I know we were going to talk about the resident manager. It was one of the things that I, that seemed to come out as a, you know, one of our recent items. It was contained in there and, and there's some question about not relating to that specific case, but question about the history of residential managers at times. And can we just talk a little bit about that generally without being specific?
So I'm going to keep Rob on a roll. Cause and, and then there's another topic that I think Rob would be good on. So, so resident manager, I, I, I can read the definition in the zoning bylaw, which is under section twelve point four, four one, is a live-in resident of a rental residential use qualified and responsible for implementation of the property management plan and for managing and, and coordinating the maintenance, housekeeping and administrative duties for the rental units under their charge. And so under the dwelling section of the bylaw, there's a requirement that if the, if the property, the property would have to be either owner occupied or that there would have to be a resident manager for that dwelling unit. And you know, there's, as you sort of indicated, Steve, there's been sort of, I don't know, a healthy discussion about resident manager and, you know, what does that really mean? I know I just said the definition to you. But I wanted, we wanted to see if anyone on the board had questions about it. And, and also if, you know, Rob has any other comments about it as well.
The only question I have about it is, is that it, it comes up in more than just one case. So it's been something that I observed in other cases. But I'm just wondering how valuable that is as a, as a, as a check on the property owner and the check on the, on disturb, try to, to reduce disturbances in the neighborhood. And whether that is valuable and whether that is one of the kinds of things we ought to be looking at for the, and I'm not making that decision now, but I'm wondering if that's one of the kinds of things we ought to be looking at in terms of changes to the bylaws. So what's your experience on that? And is it, do you find it a valuable provision?
This is, this is a section of the bylaw that I don't think does what it may have been intended to do. That definition suggests a lot more out of an individual named the resident manager than what actually occurs. And, you know, it's really rare for, for us when we're dealing with a problem situation to, to really get any, you know, anything more out of a resident manager than access to the property or coordinating a meeting with tenants. And, and I think it, it kind of makes sense that a, a property owner or a property manager can only give so much responsibility to one of the four tenants living in the dwelling unit. And I, and I think we, you know, we've come to, you know, quickly move past the resident manager and focus more on our dealings with the, with the property owner or property, or property management company, which is what we're really looking for is a higher level of management in a situation that is causing some sort of conflict in the neighborhood. I just, you know, our approach generally when we have a, when, when we have an issue is to address it to the owner of the property. And we're not, we're not telling the owner what to do or how to do it. We're identifying the issue and we're telling them to tell us how they're going to respond to it. I've never had a property manager or owner use the prop, the resident manager as part of that solution. So even in the situations where they're required under, in the converted dwelling section, I, I feel like the prop, the resident manager roles diminished really quickly. And, and almost, you know, is a, a, a point person for us to contact the group or make an arrangement for access to the property. So I, you know, I don't think it's, you know, all that valuable now. I think it may have had a, a, a larger purpose or intent before the regu, rental regulations were adopted. And maybe we just never saw that develop. You, you see that develop the way it was envisioned originally because the rental regulations kind of picked up and took things to a new level, which they general, the, the regulations generally say if there's a violation, you need to correct that or show us how you're correcting and responding to the situation. And you need to do that effectively. Otherwise you're at risk of losing your, your right to, to rent that property. So, yeah, I, I guess I don't, I don't feel like this is, we have to deal with it because it's a, a provision of the bylaw. So, um, yeah, I, I guess I don't, I don't feel like this is, uh, we have to deal with it because it's a, a provision of the bylaw. Once we get that initial notice at the hearing of who a resident manager is, or, or, or that there will be one. We generally do not get notice of the new resident manager as the tenant sees change over time.
Thanks, Mr. Mora. Mr. Greeney. Nope, you're. There we go.
So, um. Just a few comments. I've been on McClellan Street for twenty-five years and. I, I'm not remembering exact, I, I don't know when you came to town, Rob, but. Uh, things improved a great deal, uh. After those, uh, renter registration. Bylaws or whatever they are were established and, and a lot of that came out of, uh, a group of people in that area. Especially on Fearing Street. So I, I don't know if you're aware of a study that was done by Rolf Kalstrom, where he, uh. Documented that problem properties were never in any single case, uh, an owner occupied property. And so what came out of that study that he did probably twelve years ago or something like that was the, uh. The powerful deterrent that owner occupancy has on, um. Problem properties. And it's, you know, maybe outside of the scope of this discussion, but. It's occurred to me over the years and I should probably talk to the CRC or the planning board about this that, um. In addition, the, the owner occupancy, um, requirement. Not, not only is almost a guarantee that a property will not be a problem property. Uh, but it also is a very effective way of, um. Having affordable housing in Amherst. It allows. Uh, owners to live in a property that they couldn't afford otherwise, where they're able to rent out additional units. And so I've always been a strong advocate for that, um. Condition of owner occupancy. And, and so I should probably familiarize myself with what the existing bylaws are. And maybe talk to the CRC since they're now in the middle of this revision. Is that they consider that seriously in their revision of the bylaws. So anyway, I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Greeney. Ms. Parks.
I'll just say that I, I've had confusion over, uh, this, the, uh, owner occupancy versus this live-in manager. Because I remember when I first moved to Amherst, you know, there were a lot of issues with people wanting to buy a multifamily home to rent out. And then finding out that it needed to be owner occupied and it really changed whether they decided to buy that property or not. And so I'm confused about. Uh, is there such thing as owner occupied property anymore if you can have a resident manager? Are, is there a property that doesn't have an owner living there, but is an owner occupied? Property. In other words, it feels to me like when I first moved here, if, if your property was owner occupied. If it was a multifamily home, an owner had to live there if you were renting out part of it. And. And so this idea of having a resident manager in lieu of an owner. Feels new to me and not universally understood. Am I wrong in that? Is this a new thing, the resident manager?
Mr. Mora.
It's, uh, you know, I mean, it's new in the, you know, past ten, twelve years new. Uh, but there's every possible combination or, or s- situation out there as far as owner occupancy. Or, or resident manager goes. Um, this option for resident manager is specifically in the converted dwelling. Section of the bylaw. Uh, so that's very different from the duplex section, which could either be owner occupied or not owner occupied. Uh, additionally, you know, back in mid-two thousand, two thousand, two thousand, five, seven. Almost every converted dwelling application, you'll find a condition that it be owner occupied. So, you know, as a specific condition of the permit, uh, so the resident manager wasn't even, you know, uh, used. In, in those cases. And you, you're right, you know, a, a new owner looking at a property. May not even become aware of this until the moments before a closing, when it is found through the title examination. And highlighted by the closing attorney as a condition of the special permit. And that's when I get the call, what do we do? Uh, you know, am I going to be in violation if I rent this tomorrow after I take ownership, you know? So, you know, that has absolutely happened many, many times. Um, I, I've been here since two thousand and twelve. And, you know, we, we deal with it in, in different ways, sometimes helping the applicant modify the condition. Or in some cases, bring the property into compliance. Uh, but yes, it's, there isn't a universal, um, situation out there and every case has to be looked at. The history of each property has to be looked at to understand exactly what the conditions are.
Okay, I'll just say for me that, that it, it's, it isn't clear. I know of several houses on Lincoln Avenue. That are down closer to UMass where it, it's kind of like they were all meant to be owner occupied. And then something happened and they are no longer, no longer have that condition. So I'm just throwing that out there that that, for me, that's confusing and it doesn't seem like it's been applied equally. Or that information has been distributed equally.
Mr. Langsfield.
I think part of the, uh, confusion, uh, for Ms. Parks and myself as well, uh, is that. We're, if we, if we're looking at a, um. A, a structure that is. Multi-family, but is like, you know, seven or eight, uh, uh. Apartments or bedrooms or something that there, there's a possibility for a resident manager to be more separate. Uh, or in an apartment, uh, building. But in a, uh. I know we, we have one that we're, uh, looking at now where. The resident manager would end up being one of three or four people in one structure. Along with a second structure and that, that puts the resident manager in a position of having to. In quotes, police the others. And as Mr. Mara said, that, that makes them maybe no more than a point person. For, uh, for contact, uh, for the, uh, the owner. I- is it possible for us with each application to look at? The, uh, structure of the building or buildings. And if it's not possible to separate the manager from the other occupants, that we refuse to make it. Anything but an owner occupied.
I, I believe absolutely. I think, I think if you are unable to make your findings that you need to make. Without that arrangement, without a, uh, you know, a very convincing arrangement where there's this resident management. Role and not just the, um, the written piece of that, the, not just that part of the program. But actual, the physical layout to make sense and you can connect that to that requirement, absolutely. I think, I think, you know, a converted dwelling may not be successful if it doesn't have those elements. Uh, if, if judged and looked that way. Sure.
Mr. Maxfield.
Yes, I mean, if it, it all comes back down to the required findings that we have to make here, cause my, uh. My general feeling is obviously I like the idea of owner occupied, um, rental units more than anything else. It's always better to, in my opinion, have, uh. Have the, the landlord be, you know, a resident of the town with an actual stake in what goes on here as opposed to. Some developer out of Boston who's just looking to make money, you know, show as many people as you want in that apartment. I don't have to see it, just don't let me hear about it kind of thing. But if we're talking about, you know, you need to make kind of special, you know, the specific findings required. Cause although I don't think we could put any sort of stipulation, um, saying that. You know, well, maybe it's not owner occupied, but we would like the, the owner to be somebody who's nearby in a way like we. Or, you know, a resident of Amherst who's the owner, cause then we know that they also have more of a stake in the community. More of a motivation to maintain the, the property outside of just the, uh, financial factor. But we couldn't say that they, the owner must live in town. I think we might be able to do some type of thing with the specific findings, saying that they have to be relatively local. To be able to be responsive to complaints. So rather than have necessarily an owner occupied condition. But then not dealing with the resident manager either, to have something where we would want some condition to say that. The, the owner needs to be able to be responsive. In order to do so, they would have to be within some general proximity to the property. If they wouldn't want it to be owner occupied, so that we might not have to force that condition onto properties, but can still get a similar result. Of not seeing properties become. You know, essentially party houses and neighborhoods, which I think is a lot of what we're trying to avoid here. But that idea of using specific findings to, uh, I guess impose locality of owners. Is that something that, that the board has any interest in, in, in exploring?
I've not thought about that before as having sort of a town resident as a, I mean, a owner occupied. On your, owner occupied or non-owner occupied, I've never thought of town residency as a criteria that can be used to. Uh, as a condition. I, I don't even, I don't, you know, it's an idea. Mr. Maxfield, like, this is not something that I have thought about before. I think it might raise some question, legal questions about. And maybe practical questions about, you know, what if a person, the owner moves out of Amherst, um, what happens to? Then the, you know. It just does. He moves out of, he moves to Hadley or he moves to, to, uh, Welter Town. Does he have to sell the house? Is the house then? Out of compliance and he loses the ability to rent it. I'm not, I'm just not sure. Um, it's something to think about. Mr. Moore, did you have your hand up? No?
Y- yes, um, so just, uh, uh, part of, uh, that, um, just for, for your knowledge. Is that the rental regulations, uh, has a provision that if the owner isn't within twenty mi- located within twenty miles. Of the property that they're permitting, that they must have a local manager, uh, you know, a local, uh, property management company. Uh, and we define what the qualifications are. And I know that's, that's just the beginning of, of what was just mentioned. So building on that, um, it, I can tell you, there's plenty of examples with, uh, the zoning board special permits in the past. Where the property manager was, you know, almost, you know, put through an interview process through the hearing. Uh, to understand exactly how they were going to manage the property. Um, and although we don't necessarily tie it to a company, but we're tying it to their function and their services that they're providing. So I think it's definitely, um, something to consider if, um, we have a property, we know the owner's not local. Maybe we don't even know if the owner has the, the background or, or qualifications to manage the property effectively. I think it's appropriate, appropriate to ask for a professional level management to be established. Perhaps it could be reviewed in time, you know, but, but certainly initially, that could be, uh, a, 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 a very useful condition. To ensure that a property is managed. And looking at exactly what we find is, you know, property managers have all different levels. Of scope and services that they provide to these owners. So really looking at what are they going to do? How are they there to respond or, um, you know, try to proactively, uh, uh, deal with. Issues that may occur, uh, on that property.
Mr. Greeney.
So the, um, we know, I think it's, I think it's fair to say that we know that owner occupied properties are. Uh, are not problem properties. Uh, the problem is that. Some people could easily see that as being too restrictive on a particular property. And so the, what, what Dylan's suggesting, and apparently we have some of that in what Rob just talked about. Is a less restrictive, but a condition that would, you know, give us some surety. That the property would not become a problem property. So I, I, I'd just like to ask Rob, in your experience, um. Uh, property manic, properties that are under property management firms, are they generally, um. Well behaved or not problem properties? Could you comment on that?
What I, yeah, what I can say with certainty is that the, the, the properties that are managed by a, a property management company. The grounds, the outside appearance, uh, of the property is very well kept. And if there is any situation that, um, uh, kind of goes out of compliance, it's dealt with really quickly. So I think that, you know, that is definitely, um, proven itself. What, when it, when it gets into things like the number of occupants, guests, um. Late noise, uh, coming from a property, what we learn is that. The property management company may not be the person that's responsible for that situation. And it falls back to the owner. And that's when, you know, we get into these discussions with the owners. We just had one recently on, on Phillips Street where we needed to tell the owner that enough, you know, we've, we. Every few months, we're having the same situation over and over again. You need to have a property manager do more. So we, we, uh, we, we, we told them they needed to come up with a better, more thorough scope of services. To manage this property that we reviewed, we agreed to, and, and we rely on that to take the property. Out of violation and give them the opportunity to, to, to proceed and, and hopefully do better. Uh, so we're, you know, we're using the, the, the tools that we have that way. So I think the property manager can make a big difference. Uh, but what we need to be able to do is make sure that the owner's engaging them to do those extra services. That they may typically not include.
Good. Well, this has been a really interesting discussion and I think valuable, informative to me. And it's the kinds of things that we, you know, should be thinking about, talking with each other about in these kind of meetings. And maybe it's something that we want to examine for recommendations to the CRC or the, the, the planning board at some point. Um, I know we got a, several other things that we want to go through on the agenda. And so I, Maureen, you said you had one more item on, um.
Well, we'll, we'll give Rob a brief break, uh, for the moment. This is like a commercial. So, um, so, uh, well, a couple of things, I guess, uh, just, there's going to be, um. At these trainings, which I, I think, you know, we like to have maybe at least twice a year, uh, or not, I mean, sorry. I'm in trade meetings, we like to hold, uh, twice a year, but, um, but we, you know, are definitely open to having more ministry. Meetings as needed. And so at these meetings, we always want to remind, uh, give everyone a refresher about the ZBA site visits. Which we did tonight and then about the open meeting law of just a reminder of, you know, outside of these meetings. We, uh, the board members shouldn't be talking about, uh, applications that are, uh, being deliberated. And, um, and perhaps even not talk about, um, app- applications that have now been approved. And, um, the project is now moved on to construction. Um, and so, uh, with that, um, because that would be a violation of the open meeting law. Um, additionally, uh, you know, occasionally, um, s- someone will send an email to everyone, um, of, of, of something. That's, uh, minor, um, such as, oh, I can't meet that site visit at ten AM. Can you do twelve PM? You know, technically those sorts of emails are fine, um, that, you know, you're saying scheduling something or maybe. Yeah, every, someone by accident sends the email to all saying, oh, I didn't receive that attachment. Can you resend that email? Technically, those sorts of emails are fine, but just to be consistent, um, we, staff, um, just reminds everyone to just, uh, email. Um, you know, Rob, myself, Dave, uh, Dave Woskewitz or. You know, Rob, myself, Dave, Dave Westervitz, or any staff, and we can help answer your question. And then we can, you know. If if there needs to be a reattachment or or the attachment was never sent, then I would then. You know, you would, you would let me know individually and then I would respond to everyone saying, oh, whoops, here's the attachment. And that would be the example. A couple, and then.
Maureen, I can just say one thing. Reply all is not our friend here with the. When we're on the ZBA. And even though sometimes it's technically permitted, we're not in technical violation, just don't take the chance. Just don't take the chance, go through the staff for all for the communications. And that way we'll avoid inadvertently violating the open meeting law.
Okay. And periodically, there are trainings for ZBA members and planning board members. I believe I sent out an email a couple of months ago about fall trainings. And I believe some of the members did attend a training. And just as a reminder, whenever I see these trainings being offered, I will, of course. Forward that information to you all. And the town can certainly reimburse you for attending these very useful trainings. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention. So in these COVID times. I getting. You know, it, it's difficult to. It's difficult to. Get everyone information or do special permit decision signings, because everyone can't come in into the meet, come into the building and, you know, everyone has difficulty. Because they work full time, and so I'm actually looking into whether. E-signatures would be allowed, I don't know, actually, I haven't had a chance to talk to Rob about this, but I was going to reach out to our. Our town attorney about it and to our registry of deeds. And see if that would be allowed and and whether everyone would be agreeable. Or if everyone thinks that's an acceptable way of signing before I even pursue asking around. Whether it's legal. Tammy's.
I'm all for it.
Steve is a thumbs up.
I'm all for it.
Bob's a thumbs up, okay. All right.
I don't mind the walk into town, but I think it's it'd be a lot easier for everybody to to sign electronically.
Yeah, okay, I'll look into whether it's legally acceptable. With the registry deeds and with, I guess, the state of Massachusetts and with the town, so, okay. And last, I believe on the agenda for for administrative items is Article fourteen. And which is temporary zoning regarding permitting for certain uses during COVID nineteen emergency and its aftermath. And.
Mr. Maxwell, did you have something regarding e-signatures?
No, open meeting law, I wanted to just on on that quickly, he said, you know, we can't talk about things that are currently pending or that we're currently. Reviewing, but you said in closed cases as well, so let's say it's. You know, summertime, I I see Steve walking around town. And I want to say, hey, haven't, let's talk about that forty B application that we, we, what do we think we did right, what do we think we did wrong, is that then a violation about talking about something we completed months ago at that point?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, fine, you know.
You're not deliberating before some, on something that's before the board.
Yeah.
Or potentially before the board.
We can then speak on it.
I think that's right, I should let the staff. Discuss that, though, I don't want to be the expert if I'm not.
I would just suggest that. We ensure that the appeal period has expired and that we're not aware of any potential litigation associated with the property, but certainly. Six months later or the the project's under construction. And, you know, you you meet up with each other and talk about how great it turned out, you know, certainly no problem there.
Thank you.
And you were going to talk about, we were talking about the Article fourteen, Maureen? Or is Rob going to talk about that?
Rob can talk about it, he, I think he wrote it, so.
We can have the author.
I did, yeah, back in May. You know, in response to COVID, the idea was that we. Temporarily loosen up some of the special permitting and site plan review. Process to certain types of businesses. You know, back then, we were not expecting to be in this situation still. At the end of the year and thought, you know, we'd be well into recovery by now and this would be useful. You know, right after we proposed this to the council and had their support, the governor issued an order that, you know. Essentially said, notwithstanding any zoning regulation. Outdoor dining can, you know, proceed under these certain conditions. So again, didn't really get a whole lot of use because the governor's order. Permitted us to allow the outdoor dining to happen. So we did have a few cases, though, throughout the summer where Article fourteen was really useful, it. It it did permit expansion of outdoor dining areas that are more of a permanent construction, not just set up out in the road or on the sidewalk. We actually had a hair salon set up outdoor services in individual one, you know, single service tents. And water supply set up outdoors. So we start to, we did see it be used a couple of times. And as it was originally. Adopted, it was, it had a six month duration. So as that was coming to an end in in the beginning of December. We went back to the board last, to the council last month and asked to extend it entirely through twenty twenty one. And we expanded it quite a bit. So we we did identify the difference between a permanent use and a temporary use. And we get a lot of requests for temporary uses, that would, you know, attend at. The survival center or a church or the schools. And we expect that we'll probably have the same requests again in the spring. So we, you know, we built in a number of what we could think of as probably, you know, likely to to be asked along the way. We also included farm stands and medical establishments. Not knowing what would be needed for, you know, rolling out even the vaccine, you know, whether there be temporary structures or. Areas designated for that purpose. So what we wanted to do is ensure that there wasn't a ninety day process to allow this to happen. But we didn't want to bypass all the zoning bylaw requirements entirely. So essentially what happens is I conduct a review with other staff. And in in the hopes of issuing an administrative approval. That satisfies the special permit requirement, does not require the applicant to come in front of the board. But I am responsible to ensure that the ten point three findings are applied properly. All conditions of the bylaw are met. I can't grant a waiver any different than what the bylaw says can be waived. There's still no variances and things like that, so the bylaw itself doesn't change except for the the approval process. So. Restaurants are definitely one that's in this category and most likely to be used. Retail establishments and likely medical facilities. I'm expecting to be to be used through these sections, so. The board shouldn't be surprised if they see a new restaurant open. Downtown, for example, that didn't have come in front of the board, because during this time, Article fourteen actually will allow that to happen. Through an administrative approval that we conduct entirely by staff. This is specific to zoning, certain zoning districts, it doesn't include any residential property, like, you know, our discussions tonight about. Owner occupied, non owner occupied residential properties, those are not subject to this. There will be temporary or permanent situations that happen. So far, we've, we've granted two administrative approvals for permanent. Situations and one is an expansion of the outdoor dining at Stacker's Bar downtown in the back. They had a patio. They expanded the patio to accommodate additional seating for the spring. That's a permanent change being proposed, not just a temporary outdoor dining setup. So we were able to find that acceptable and and grant that approval. And there was another one just down the road where the old Bart's Ice Cream. Shop is again for a couple of outdoor seats in a permanent placement on private property. So that's it so far, there's a lot of discussions happening with potential restaurants. The opening in town or filling some of the vacant spaces downtown. But we expect this to go well into next year before it's actually used any further.
So Rob, how long is this, is Article fourteen contemplated to be in effect? Is it going, is this, it's just, it's mostly COVID related, right, and it's supposed to. It's supposed to expire at a point in time, is there a date, or is this something that the council has to look at and then sort of delist it at some point?
It it automatically expires December thirty first of twenty twenty one.
Okay.
So up until that time, an administrative approval can be granted, it doesn't mean that the work has to occur or. You know, the use open, but the approval would be granted. By that timeframe and be covered by Article fourteen. The decisions are recorded with the town clerk's office and, you know, are are just as real as a special permit would have been and. In the future will be, you know, viewed as a legitimate permit. Even if the, even if that same establishment has to come back to the zoning board five years from now. To alter or expand, it would be an alter, alteration or expansion of that administrative approval. That was, that was granted during this time. So yeah, next, all of next year, and and then I would imagine September, October of twenty one, the council will decide if there's any need to. Extend it or just let it expire. And go back to whatever our new bylaw might say.
Mr. Barrick. We can't hear you, there you go.
Right, sorry, I was muted. These changes all seem like a very good idea. Would it make sense for for you as you make, as you issue these permits? To have some procedure for notifying this board? So that we can be aware of what you're doing. And should it seem to people on the board that you you were doing either less or more? Then seemed advisable, there could be a feedback loop to advise you. You know, not not to over, not not to overturn your decisions, but to to make sure that the 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 ZBA. A year from now not find itself totally out of sync with what you have been doing.
Absolutely, I think Maureen and I can 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 talk about a way of making sure the board's informed. If there are more administrative meetings like these, I'd be happy to give a report of what we did during that period leading up to that. And I welcome feedback and any suggestions that the board have at any time, you can always reach out to Maureen or or I individually. If you see something happening and have questions about it, just want to understand what went into making that decision, be happy to spend time on that.
And please understand that I say this not in in any way to disagree with what you're doing, but just to to try to be sure that there is some. Mutual understanding between you and the board going forward.
Absolutely.
Really good, good suggestion, Mr. Barrick, thank you. Maureen, Ms. Pollak.
I just wanted to mention that. During the review process through the the administrative. Review process with the building commissioner, the applicant would need to put a sign. At their door, at the entranceway of their door or on the front window or the siding of the door. To indicate to the public that they are requesting an administrative. Approval for their proposed project, so as a way to inform members of the public.
Langstel.
Ms. Pollak, is that a standardized? Form? Or is each company? Entity going to make up their own?
I believe Rob and Inspection Services are working on a template. Of what mine would look like.
That's right, it doesn't have to be any particular notice. It's not a town notice, so it's not a town letterhead, but we did put a template in the application that. Mainly to to ensure that certain information is put on the notice. And that it be the location. You know, of a size that can be read. And for a duration of not less than ten days prior to the. The 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 work beginning or the approval occurring. Those were, you know, some of the basic criteria and our information so that they can contact us with questions.
Mr. Westervitz.
Yeah, Rob, can you speak to whether or not the abutters are notified and their participation in that?
The abutters are not notified, so again, this, the the whole purpose of this effort is to. To speed up the process, to get the business open again, to get the business adjusting to whatever. Mandate from the state or guidance requires them to make changes and give them the ability to hopefully be as successful as they can during this time. However, that ten day notice that's required is an opportunity for anybody to contact our office and give suggestions or feedback. You know, not that I would expect this to occur, but if there was an aggrieved party to any approval. My decision for the administrative approval would be appealed to the zoning board. Just like any other appeal would be heard. And that's, that's specifically written into the Article fourteen as well. So, yeah, it's, it's not a formal notice.
Thanks for the update and we will look forward to updates and continuing conversation about this. Mr. Moore, I think that'd be really helpful for the board. Maureen, did you?
The item on whether the board has any recommendations to the planning board about zoning bylaw amendments. Do folks want to email me whether you have? Suggestions or recommendations rather, or should we just go ahead and plan out an administrative meeting now and in the future, like in a month or or so? How would that?
I think collecting, you know, I think my impression is collecting some emails is a good idea, I think that. Asking all of us to do our homework on the zoning bylaws over Christmases and the holidays is going to be tough. So I think that a month is too quick for this. I'm going to, I plan on doing other things in reading the zoning bylaws for Christmas. But I'm going to do some of that in January when it's cold and I have nothing else to do. So how about we, how about? Good ideas go to, go to you, Maureen, and to Rob and to Dave, that's a great idea, then let's try to have some kind of a meeting. If we have some good ideas in February, maybe the end of February, is that going to be too late, Rob? No, at the end of February, we could have another administrative meeting, we can discuss it and have some ideas at that point, why don't we do it that way? And it frees up everybody's Christmas or holidays as best as possible, okay? Do you have anything else, Ms. Pollak?
No.
Mr. Greeney. Go up here.
So can we, can those be shared if people are sending, they can't, okay.
So one last thing that I had is, one of the things that I'm, that I am. Challenged with is site plans and all the different plans that we get, when we have a big project. Especially I think of recent projects, there are fifteen or fifteen sheets that are gigantic. And the ones that challenge me are the site plans, the drainage, the different, the traffic, the power, the. The grading, all the lighting, all those are confusing to me because I've never dealt with that, I don't have a problem with the interior, I've built out office spaces before, managed building out office spaces before. So that doesn't, that isn't as confusing, but the other stuff is confusing to me, and I don't know if that, and so I would like to have. The town engineer or somebody sit down via Zoom and go through what, exactly what those plans. Sit down via Zoom and go through what, exactly what those plans are. So I'm more, I'm not relearning every single time I see one. And if, I don't know if other people on the board are interested in doing that, if that would be helpful. I would be happy to try to set something up. We could do an administrative meeting so that we better understand those, those uh documents that we get in front of us. I think we'll do a better job as a board if we do that, but I'm wondering if that's something that people are interested in, or should I just go off and do it myself? If you're interested, raise your hand. Great. Well, we could have class. We'll have a virtual class on reading site plans. Um, and maybe we can work together to do that. Again, not during Christmas, but uh after in January or February. All right. Maureen, does that sound like a good idea?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. Uh, uh, one, uh, I guess a couple of questions. So what is it? Um, sort of the whole plan set of you want to be walk through the plan set or are there?
Yeah.
Little sheets like a.
Walk through the plan set, you know, walk through the plan set, kind of understand what level of details we need to have before we can make a decision. How much modification and much additional detail is made after we make a decision before construction? Just that kind of, so it's everything from what that squiggle means to why there's, there's fifteen pages in front of me. What do all those pages are? And then how do they, how does that change during the process from application to construction? Is that?
Yeah, sure. And um, you know, we could do sort of two um. Uh, two di- different types of projects. Maybe one is a larger project, like a mixed use project. Uh, maybe a project the board has previously approved.
Yeah.
And then maybe a small, uh, you know, a duplex or something, uh, just as a contrast of a a small, smaller project versus a much larger, more detailed. Which gets maybe into fill and m- m- much more detail about stormwater.
That would be great. That'd be a good way to approach it. And I also want to just open this up for any, for, that's the last of the things that I have on my agenda. So I just want to open it up for anybody on the board, um, if they have a comment, suggestion, a question. Um, or something that they'd like to get off their chest. Uh, even, uh, this is a good time to do that. And just remember, we have a public meeting, so um, this is, this is being recorded. But um, this is an opportunity for any discussion on on anything. Ms. Parks.
So I'm just wondering if when we bring out these uh items up to the planning board, if we can bring up some of the items. Um, that are not real clear, like, um, you know, what does it mean to say substantially more detrimental to to a neighborhood? You know, some of the things that we struggled with over the last six months, um, you know, a buffer zone, whether you could, whether parking lot counts. As part of a business related to buffer zones, stuff like that. I'm wondering if we can, uh, you know, kind of ask the planning board. To give us more detailed information on on those kind of open items. There or not fully defined items to me. Uh, so that was one thing. And the other thing is, I just wanted to say, Steve, I think you're doing a really great job. It's really wonderful to work with you. I think you're very, um, uh, you work really well with the public, especially if people are getting uh concerned. And so I just really appreciate uh the job you're doing. So I wanted to thank you.
Thank you. That's kind. I couldn't, I can't do it without all you. So that goes to everybody on the board and all the staff. I think we've done a really good job and that's, that's a compliment to all of you. So thank you very much, Kami. I appreciate that. Mr. Langsdale.
Um, I'd like to echo her uh words about you. I think you're doing a marvelous job. And uh, it's very, you have very strong but uh uh contemplative leadership. Uh, I would also like to thank Mr. Mara for being here because I think the more we as a board understand. The processes that he goes through, uh, the the clearer we can be in terms of. Uh, conditions that we want to uh put on any certain project. Uh, and the more we understand the um. Uh, I don't, problems, limitations that he has to deal with. I think it also enhances what we're able to do uh on the board with each application. So thank you.
I echo that. Great. Um, Ms. Parks.
Just really quick, I also want to say big thank you to Maureen for always being really wonderful and getting everything to us. And, you know, thank you so much for your support. Really appreciate you.
Here, here.
Here, here. You're here.
Yep. All right, well, that settles, that's, I think that's everything for the agenda tonight, um, unless there's anything else that anybody wants to say. Oh, one more thing. All right, Maureen.
Uh, we do uh have the uh general public comment period.
That's correct. Um, but we're done with the the comment from the board. Yep, the administrative stuff. We have one last thing is the general comment period for any matter not before the board tonight. And if there's anybody from the public who wishes to make a comment, this is the time to do it. I see no raised hands. So um, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Mr. Maxfield.
Uh, seconded.
All right, motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Oh, we, you don't discuss a motion to adjourn. I keep forgetting that. That's the reason, that's the reason you you do this. So there is no discussion on that. It's a roll call vote. I vote aye. Ms. Omira? Sounds like Ms. Omira's dog is voting aye. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Greenie?
Aye.
Ms. Omira?
Aye.
All right. Have a good night, everybody. Motion carries, it's unanimous. Um, have a good night. Have a good holiday season if I.